Thank you very much. All right, so we will call the November the 19th, 2020 regular meeting of Coffee County Board of Education Order. And our invocation tonight will be given by Christopher Swenson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
I want to, I mean, not as easy to everyone of you tonight in your respective places. I want to share just very briefly a word and then I want to go into the scripture. I want to just speak on a four-letter word just very, very briefly. In today's society, sin is very prevalent. Matthew 24:12 states, "Because iniquity shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold." Many believers struggle today with loving their brother for a wide array of reasons. Race, gender, socioeconomic status, et cetera, plays a big part in our prejudices. Scripture says for us to love one another. This is bringing me to ask the question, what is love? First John, chapter number four, verse six, says, "God is love." Corinthians, chapter number 14, gives all the attributes of love. Love is God, and if God is love and he lives in us, then there is no way we can hate our brother or our sister. Bible says in First John, chapter number four, verse seven, "That everyone that loveth is born of God and knoweth God." If love proceeded from a man, it suggests two things, that he is born of God, and number two, that he knows God. In today's society, this is the love that men should be displaying to show the world that we know Christ. Second, Chronicles, chapter number seven, and verse number 14, says, "If my people who are called by my name, four things, would humble themselves, pray, seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways; three things, then when I hear from heaven, I will forgive their sins and heal their land." My brothers and sisters, I want to suggest to you that love is the serum that will heal the land. Let us pray. Father, we come to you as humble as we know how, thanking you so much for tonight. We pray for every person that is in this room and that's under the sound of my voice. Father, we pray tonight for direction. We pray that you would lead us in guidance. We pray for the wisdom that only you can give to make good, sound decisions concerning our school system, concerning the education of our children. Lord, help us to unite tonight and to be on one accord. For when we come together with one mind and one heart, great things happen. So tonight, we invoke your presence in this place, and we ask God that you would be with us. For you said, "Were two or three gathered in my name, I would be in the midst." And so, Father, tonight, we thank you for your presence, for your guidance, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
God bless you.
Thank you. Great job. We got a little gift for you.
We got a type of appreciation. Appreciate you coming out tonight and giving our gift.
My pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
All right. Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda. If we don't make any amendments to the agenda, we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
The motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Ms. Miller. Mr. Jauer. All in favor? Dr. Leece.
All right. Leadership capacity. We know our mission is Destination Graduation for College Career and Life, and our vision is to create a stronger community. And I think this meeting tonight, the work session, has been an excellent example of working to create a stronger community, doing equitable and excellent education for every student. And I want to welcome our visitors that we have here tonight. Dr. Lang from Coffey High School. Good to see you here with Ms. Lord. And we've got students here, Blake and others. So we will proceed with our meeting tonight. And Pastor Swenson, great job opening up the meeting. We sure appreciate it. And we're going to open our meeting with a video. Our Board of Education is a finalist for Governance Team of the Year from the Georgia School Board Association. We will find out Monday night at 6:30 if we are one of three Governance Teams of the Years. But you are a finalist, board members, and congratulations on being a finalist. And as part of that process, we had to create a video to send in for the recognition banquet. They're going to have a banquet Monday night at 6:30. And then they will play the videos of the finalists, and then they will announce the Governance Team of the Year. And hopefully, it'll be Coffey County. So, board members, I plan to be here Monday night, the 30th, and watch the awards banquet. They're sending us, I think, one or two. I think the chairman gets a log in, and I get a log in. And so, I'll be here to watch it if anybody wants to come join me. I think they're going to have it on their Facebook Live. You can watch it.
Well, I'm one of the presenters.
Oh, you're going to be there? All right.
No, not there. We're doing virtual. We're not virtual. There's no banquet.
So it's all virtual?
Yeah, we ran through the script today.
All right. Well, great.
It's all virtual.
All right. So everybody can just do it from their virtual platform. All right. Well, anyway, so as part of that, thank you, Ms. Press.
And I don't know the answer to the three. I really don't. They didn't let us know that. They didn't let us know that.
Thank you, Press.
But Donna Lowery, Donna Lowery, if you've ever watched Eleven Live News, she was on the affiliate broadcaster for 30 odd years. She's retired, but still works. Actually, she was trending on Twitter this week. She's the one that was the spokesperson for Secretary of State's office.
All right.
And anyway, so she's trending on Twitter. Everyone was really proud of the way she handled the news there. So, yeah, she'll be doing the MC, and then each of the GSBA directors will introduce the qualifying boards, small, medium, large. So I think we're in the medium.
Yes, sir. Three thousand, ten thousand, something. All right. So as part of the process, we had to create a video. And Blake Martin, who is here with us tonight, he produced the video for us. So this is his video that you're about to view. And we hope this gives a good feel for the Coffey County schools and our mission and vision, and what we're all about here in Coffey County. So we are Coffey Video.
Coffey County Schools, located in the heart of South Georgia, is part of a community that offers true Southern hospitality. Continually demonstrating excellence that support workforce development and economic well-being of Coffey County, we are very proud that our school system was recently named the 2019 Community Partner of the Year by the Douglas Coffey County Chamber of Commerce and the 2018 Charter School System of the Year. Our school system, home of the Coffey Trojans, is comprised of eight elementary schools, one middle school, a freshman campus, two high schools, and an alternative education center. We are proud to offer an excellent, well-rounded education to our students, including high-quality extracurricular and co-curricular activities, as well as a fine arts program. With our vision of creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student, teaching and learning, workforce and life, people and culture, and family and community are the four areas of our strategic plan that drive our work. Coffey County Schools provide a comprehensive and robust curriculum. Evidence of this is found in our improved student achievement and growth. Knowing that the district needed a system for analyzing data to maintain these two goals, the governance team was instrumental in setting the implementation of Illuminate. A strong technology infrastructure is maintained within the district. The school district has upgraded their wireless network, provides one-to-one device ratio for students, and recently purchased over 3,000 Chromebooks to replenish our inventory. Destination Graduation for College, Career, and Life, the mission of our school system. We purposely prepare our students with the skills to navigate life beyond graduation. The district worked to develop a timeline to phase in high-quality wall-to-wall academies to reach all students. The academies are designed to incorporate rigorous coursework and allow students to learn through the lens of a career interest. Beginning fall of 2019, the high school developed their four academies, where students and teachers are organized into small learning communities. Fine Arts, Business, and Information Technology, Public Service and Education, Engineering, Agriculture and Mechanics, and Health and Human Services. The governance team emphasizes safety and security in our schools. They approved the purchase of security systems and the development and implementation of a safety department, hiring a police chief and officers to work on all school campuses. The Coffey County School System is an equal opportunity employer and works hard to retain, recruit, and hire highly qualified teachers. To increase retention, the governance team approved the district offering financial support to the non-traditional teacher when entering an alternative certification program. Another financial incentive was adding an additional pay step beyond L5. Our community has a rich tradition of supporting our schools, valuing families, and working together. We recognize that it takes all of us for the success of our students. Through an investment in networking, schools throughout the community are preparing to offer Wi-Fi service to the area immediately surrounding school campuses. This initiative helps us increase equity to the communities we serve. Our school nutrition and transportation departments worked in unison during the COVID-19 shutdown to provide 10,000 meals per day to our students. The system uses Kinvald, a two-way text messaging application that allows teachers and leaders to quickly communicate with parents in a secure and archived system. The Coffey County School System is fully engaged in financial accountability. Overseen by the governance team and superintendent, the finances of the school district have proven to be consistently stable. The finance department has received three awards of distinction for excellent financial reporting. We are proud to have a governance team that works alongside our leaders, teachers, and stakeholders to support the work mirrored in our beliefs. We believe in community, opportunity, focus, fairness, ethics, and excellence. We are Coffey.
All right. Well, I think that video certainly displays our mission and vision. Thank y'all always did create it. And we'll move on with our recognitions, but hang around. Our first round of recognitions. Ms. Clayton, are you going to do the honors?
Thank you, Dr. Leece and board members. I'm honored tonight to introduce and recognize one of our teachers, Ms. Julie Ward from Coffey High School. We have so many talented individuals within our school system, and tonight's honoree is certainly one of those. Because of her talents, many of her students have the gift of art or photography. Julie has been a part of the Coffey County community since 2001, and she actually began her tenure with us as a substitute teacher. She first started as a parent professional and then was hired as an art teacher at Coffey High School, and the rest is history. Coming into education as a non-traditional educator, Mrs. Lord earned her Bachelor of Fine Arts in Graphic Design and Illustration from Auburn University and her Master of Art Education from the University of Florida. To earn her Art Education Teaching Certificate, Mrs. Lord completed the Georgia TAP program. And during the program, she was selected as the Georgia TAP Ambassador of the Year in 2017 and was recognized statewide. Within our district as the ambassador, she worked and continues to work with numerous new teachers, mentoring them during their first year of teaching. Within our community, she volunteers with several organizations, such as the Coffey County Food Bank, and serves as a member of the Wiregrass Artists Guild, which coordinates our Children's Spring Art Show and other special events promoting the arts. Mrs. Lord serves as the Coffey High Fine Arts Department Chair and teaches visual arts and advanced placement studio art. She is president of the District Nine Georgia Art Educators Association, the National Art Honor Society chapter sponsor, and serves as the sponsor of the Coffey High Art Club. Additionally, she has served as a presenter at the Georgia Art Education Association and was scheduled to present at the recent association conference, but it was canceled due to COVID. Just like Mrs. Lord, many of her students have gone on to receive numerous awards throughout the state and nationally thanks to her expertise and guidance. Mrs. Lord truly knows her content, but above all, she cares about her students and their success. She exudes her love of art in just a few minutes in having a conversation with her. She is creative, talented, and has a genuine love for her students, and they love her. Tonight, we are happy to recognize Mrs. Julie Lord, as she has been named the 2020-2021 Secondary Art Teacher of the Year by the Georgia Art Education Association. Julie, please come up. We have some of Julie's art that we're going to show, and she's going to talk just a little bit about what she's doing in the classroom.
These photos that are first are from having a photography class this year. It's the first year, and many years, I've been told, since we've had photography at high school. And it's been a lot of fun. I'm learning right along with the students. I love taking pictures, but I've never taught it before, so it's a lot of fun. Then some of these pictures are from a false still life I put up, and the kids have to plan what they want to do for it. And lots of different media. I try to push them out of their comfort zone by doing some different things that they might not have ever tried before. So similar photography. I love to teach drawing. It's kind of more of my passion. And really trying to teach them to look at what they are drawing. So many kids just want to draw. Okay, I know what an apple looks like. I'm going to draw an apple. But to really observe and look. And so I try to start that out in all my classes. This is going to take some of them to a competition in Valdosta, where a couple of them won some awards. And then this year, I brought back, trying to do a little bit of de-stress. Some of the kids are just so stressed out at school. So this is actually an activity I did in my master's classes where it's, they call it kinetic drawing. And we put big paper on the floor. We got out pastels, and we played some relaxing music. And it was really good for the kids because they had no preconceived idea of what they wanted to do, you know? So they just got to create. And we did it for probably about 20 to 30 minutes, and they just loved it. They asked, and we do this every Friday. This is so much fun. So we've done it a couple times. I actually went and taught it at the ninth grade with some of the teachers. They had me come after school one night, and we did it. But it was a lot of fun. And then we put them up in the hall for display. So that's my advanced class. A lot of the APR kids. And we talked about symmetry and just doing different movements. And there's an artist, a contemporary artist, that does this, and she actually calls it performance art. And she'll do it in a big gallery with 50 to 100 people watching her do this. It's really interesting. So we studied her a little bit, and then just went out and did it, right out in front of the new PAC between the gym, so we could all spread out.
Thank you, Ms. Lord.
Dr. Leece, if you have anything, we can take a picture, please. I'd like to work in Coffey County.
Yes, come on up, Ms. Lord. Let's get a photo. I'm going to hold my breath while.
I'm trying. One more try. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lord.
All right, this way.
We would like to recognize Kate Merritt from Coffey High School. She was recently named the Region 5A Cross Country Champion. She's a 10th grader at Coffey High School and is the daughter of Rebecca Merritt and Chris Merritt. So congratulations to Kate. And then about two or three weeks ago, right before Chick-fil-A opened, Matt and Jessica Baker contacted me. And normally with Chick-fil-A, I think people spend the night the night before and get 100 free meals for the whole year. So they didn't do that this year because of COVID. So they wanted for us to select some community heroes. And in their definition, a community hero is someone who consistently goes above and beyond serving those around them. The person often puts the needs of others ahead of themselves. Community heroes offer their courage, strength, and self-sacrifice to benefit people who may never know them by name. Within the Coffey County School System, we're blessed to have a wealth of heroes. And the individuals' names that I'm going to call, they were selected by their peers. And I had to tell a lot of white lies to get them up here. They thought they were coming for a meeting. And it was just wonderful because there's a representation of all sorts of employees within the school system. And when they got in here, they were spaced out, socially distancing, and Matt and Jessica walked in with balloons. And they were just amazed. They had no idea this was coming, so we just really had a good time. So I would like to read the names out, if you haven't already heard, who are our community heroes. Buddy Gilyard from our Transportation Department. Cindy Bookout from Eastside Elementary. Connie Arambolo from the Central Enrollment Center. Donna Davis from the Career Academy. Eric Quawell, also from the Career Academy. Heather Day at Ambrose Elementary. JW Dockry from West Wing Elementary. Jennifer Wilcox from Nichols Elementary. Jessica Williams from the freshman campus. Jill Pruitt from Coffey Middle School. Kim Hall from Coffey High. Kimberly McKinnon from Rockston Mary Haves. Lee Mobley from Satilla. Leslie Smith from Coffey Middle. Lori O'Neil from Coffey High. Michael Bull Brown from the Boys and Girls Club. Randy Moore from the Maintenance Department. Sharon Ben Williams from Special Services. She was actually dancing in here that day. I think they got the video of her and put it on their website. Sheila Cooper from School Nutrition. Stacy Merchant from Indian Creek. Paul Wright from our Migrant Education. Pat McAllister from the freshman campus, and Bernice Martin from Alternative Education. So we salute our community heroes.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I wanted to give out a superintendent's award. We don't give these out very often. Just every once in a while, when something big, somebody does. And so anyways, I wanted to give a superintendent's award to Blake Martin. Blake created for us the video back when we started school, the safety video. And then we employed him to come back and create the video that we saw here this evening. So wanted to give a superintendent's award to Blake Martin. And I want to read this. Blake Martin, a product of Coffey County Schools and currently a senior at Coffey High, contacted Dr. Leece last spring to present the idea of creating a promotional video for Coffey County Schools. This video would allow our school system to tell our story using a multimedia approach. After months of collaboration with the central office and Ms. Kim Clayton taking the lead, a feature video was created that represents the excellence of Coffey County Schools. The video is a reflection of our system's mission and vision and allows us to showcase our holistic, well-rounded approach to educating students. Blake is also the student ambassador for Know Your Work. He has assisted in the production of videos promoting that campaign. He's the media manager at his church, the sanctuary, where he also produces videos. Since today has been Know Your Work Day in Coffey County Schools, I think it is fitting, as we recognize Blake, to share comments from an article about Know Your Work. Blake said, "Because of my church, I work as a media manager. Pastor Bob really wanted me to help out with Know Your Work, not only because I was a student who was involved at Coffey High School, but also because I do videos at the church. I decided to join Know Your Work, basically to be a part of the change. I know suicide has affected people in the grades above mine, and I really wanted to be a part of that change. I didn't want to see that happen in my own grade or with anybody, period." So this time, I'd like to present Blake Martin, the superintendent. And for our final recognition, as our final recognition, I would like to recognize an employee nearing 30 years of service with the Coffey County School System. I want to take this opportunity to show my appreciation for her continued dedication and service to our school system. She has been a consistent contributor to system improvements in various facets. In her role, she's often tasked with the recognition of others and rarely recognized for the quality work she does. She has a bachelor's degree in marketing and management. She wrote the article from which Blake's comments were taken. Both she and Blake were excited to produce the video for our system. The creation is a true vision and represents their talent and commitment to the Coffey County system. She has participated in numerous leadership programs throughout her tenure as a current and past member of boards such as Board of Directors for the Georgia Association of School Personnel Administrators, Wiregrass Technical College Advisory Board for the Georgia Teacher Alternative Preparation Program, and the Foundation Board for Coffey Regional Medical Center. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Kim Clayton, personnel of both relations directors of Coffey County Schools.
Go hold your breath.
This may not do well. Hang on, I got to settle up. You need a hold breath.
Great job.
Is that why you took the Baptist group publication?
The nurses.
All right. All right, Ms. Clayton and Blake, y'all did a great job with that video. All right. GSBA Safety Grant Award. I want to recognize Chris Elrod. You want to tell the board about that?
I will. Real quick, when we received the grant, it was up to $5,000 for our, anything that we can come up with safety-wise. We decided this year that since we were getting these two special needs buses, that Buddy and I talked about maybe putting a modified camera on both of these buses, which will give the driver a monitor inside the bus where he can see a complete 360 around the bus. So there are no blind spots with that. So we felt like that would be a really, really good way to spend part of this money. We bought two of those to outfit both of these buses we're fixing to buy. And of course, that was $4,066.12. So we still had a little bit of money left to make up the $5,000. So I'm always tasked with our bus drivers fussing about people passing our school buses as our stop arms are out and our red lights are flashing. We also included in this grant two of those stop arm cameras that will take pictures of people as they pass our buses where we can do some enforcement on that to try to bottom line, protect our kids. And that's what that's about. So with that total, it's $48.76.68, and I am tickled that we got that this year.
Thank y'all for pursuing it.
back when we had accelerated reader and then more recently with reading counts. This is the 20th anniversary of the Satilla REMC Foundation, and as their 20th anniversary is here, they wanted to do something a little different. This time, they gave a grant to each district in the amount of $20,000, which is a significant contribution to the school district. This was a technology grant, and we needed to just come up with a proposal that would benefit the most students possible with any kind of grant related to technology. And one of the needs that we've had, as you mentioned, for several months, or actually several years, by our schools, is a need for a dedicated in-house video system so they could produce their own videos in-house, they could encode those, and push them out over the network. So with this grant, we're going to be able to equip every school with a unique system. They're all going to be custom-built for their schools. They'll all be built from components that we purchased and assembled in-house, and we'll build them, we'll understand how they work, and we'll be able to support them. And essentially, they're going to get a video camera, they're going to get a DVD player, and two encoders that will sit on our network, and that will let them push any kind of video source they need to out to their teacher desktops over the network. If they want to do an in-house news program, I know some of our schools already have those going, this will really enhance the way they're able to do that. It will let them pump movies out over the network. If they're having a movie day, it's Polar Express Day or Frozen Day, they can push that out across the network to just shortcut on the network. The beauty of having all these, a common system that sits on the same network, is we can essentially go to in-house TV network, if you will. Each school will have two, so we'll have 24 channels that they can choose from. So we'll go to a landing page, now this will be Ambrose 1, Ambrose 2, Roxton 1, Roxton 2, and each school will be able to push their content in those. So if something is looping all the time, somewhere, we've got a little kiosk out here in the lobby, that content will be available to anybody that wants to click on that and watch it. They'll also be able to push those videos out to social media. If they're having, you know, in this age of COVID, if they're having an honors day that parents can't attend easily in person, they can push that out to their Facebook page or YouTube using the same equipment. So we thought it was going to be a great tool. We're very thankful for Satilla REMC for providing this force, and we'll put it to great use. So they did present us with a check for $20,000 a couple weeks ago, and we're planning to get started with this project in January.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. The next item on the agenda is the graduation rate. This was released, I think, two weeks ago, and we wanted to present it to the board formally in a board meeting, and so you'll see this graphic. Allison Spade, she's not here, but Ms. Allison Spade, she's our Director of Testing and Assessment. She created the slide for us so we could graphically show off our new graduation rate, which is the highest we've ever had. We're over 90% as a school district, and you'll see at Wiregrass Career Academy, they really have come a long ways. They're at 96.3%, and Coffey High School is at 92.96%. So those are our graduation rates. Big celebration. We're above the state average, and we're the highest we've ever been. So those are the graduation rates. And next item on the agenda is resource capacity. We have the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the previous meeting, the financial reports that were discussed at the work session. We have the TAD District, Douglas Square. This is just the resolution for adding to the TAD development with the property, and it does not involve our property at all. So that's what this TAD resolution is about. All right? And then we have the State Capitol Outlay Projects Application. We presented this back at the September meeting. I meant to get it on the agenda at our October meeting, but didn't get it on there, and so it's just, it has to be approved for us to receive the entitlement funding for HVAC at Ambrose and HVAC at Indian Creek. We'll get approximately $1.2 million in entitlement funding, I think is what it is. And then we have policies on the consent agenda. These are GAA Equal Employment Opportunity. These are revisions that GSBA set down with the new federal guidelines that have been released, and so we, these have been taken directly from the GSBA policy recommendations, and Coffey County was inserted, and these policies have been vetted by Harbin Hartley and their firm, and also locally. So we, basically, these are just for compliance for the new regs for sexual harassment is the big piece. And then Title IX, and so we are asking for approval, GAA, GAEB, JAA, and JCAC. Now, that IHF, that's just for public review, that's not for approval. Any questions?
Because I'm going to want to talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, we're not, that E, that's just public review, that's not for approval. But the sexual harassment and the JAA and GAEB and JAA, that's for approval. We presented those last month, they've been sitting on the table. Like I said, these are just straight template policy changes, straight from GSBA. And that's the consent agenda.
Do we have any motion to approve the consent agenda?
I mean, we accept the consent agenda, Eric.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right, thank you, board members. I would ask that we convene to an executive session to discuss the employment of employees and any disinteractions with employees or identifiable information, and then also property and real estate. So that's in the move to executive session.
We have a motion to move to executive session.
Move.
Second by Preston, all in favor? All in favor of the executive session.
We have a motion. And Brown second. We have a motion by Mr. Dowers, second by Mr. Preston, to move to executive session. All in favor?
All right. At this time, I would ask the board to approve the personnel list as presented.
Make some motion to approve personnel.
Motion by Mr. Dowers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. All in favor?
All right.
All right, we are getting it.
That's it. All done.